Without being able to refer. But I know that there is a lot of public interest in this issue of sense of urgency. And so we have tried everything that we can to make sure that sense of urgency is felt by the FRA. Spoke to them again this morning, and needless to say, the moment that we receive any official communication that we got that authorization from the FRA, we will make that public immediately. I know that there's also been some interest more broadly in quiet zones because this concerns one particular area that we've been asked about, what it would take to extend quiet zones to other areas. So in the budget that we're requesting the council to pass in the month of October for the year 2018, we're going to request $120,000 for median channelization, reviewing what it would take to establish quiet zones, and continue to research what it would take to extend the area where those quiet zones can be put in place to more parts of the city. I'm happy to do my best to answer any questions, and I've also asked Lieutenant Department of Public Works to join in case any council members have any questions that feel a little more technical than I'm prepared to respond to. Is there anything we can do to help get a sense, because I know that council members are hearing about this quite a bit?
I'll start with Regina and work through again, Joe.
Sure. The supplemental measures that have been put in place that we feel will put us in compliance, total timeframe that it took to institute those, and the cost, if somebody could give us a feel for that, please.
Yeah, see if that might be able to tell us a little more in detail.
Councilmember Joe Broden, the channelization devices were installed in June, and since then, we've been working with the FRA on getting the quiet zone reestablished. The cost is something I can get back to you. I don't have the exact number with me right now, but I'll make a note and I'll get back to you on the cost.
And if I might just do one other, just follow-up. Turnover by death, hiring, whatever. And I'm only asking this because we've been seeing this in a number of different areas, but sort of those active projects, you know, that staff is working on, is there, you know, in the not-for-profit world, we used to call it a tickle five, you know, this is, these are the things that, you know, we don't miss when those transfers occur, you know, within staffing or, you know, administration. How are we gonna shore that kind of process up, I guess?
Yeah.
Because this is certainly consequential.
Yeah, one thing that's important to us is to make sure any time there's a change, whether it's a lateral move, a promotion, or somebody departing the administration, that we make sure that there's a transition interview and an opportunity to get any kind of details. So one thing we'll be reviewing is what else we can do to kind of document and put in writing. I do want to just clarify, I don't know factually of any indication that the turnover contributed in any way to this trans being sounded right now. What it does mean is, obviously, is that we're having a harder time reconstructing some of what's happened over the years because we can't speak to one of the people who was involved.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, in terms of more of those quiet zones being on the west side of town, that has been a concern that people have addressed with me on a variety of messages. Is that the monies that you're talking about, looking at to establish more from our city limits to Mayflower all the way in, because, and there are two different tracks over there that's, I mean, because there's a variety of tracks we have become, because of course you can't get across without passing the train over there. And so, is, what your thoughts regarding that, because I believe most of that is more on the east side instead of the west side? Could you share?
That's right. The zones that we're hearing about right now are mainly on the east side, and so we're hearing from community members and we're hearing from you and other council members, the interest in making sure that there are other areas close to the tracks, including on the west side, that you can get the same measures that would lead to the quiet zones. So that's what we hope to be able to develop using the line item that we're requesting in the budget for 2018.
So in the original quest, was there ever any attempt, to your knowledge, to look at the west side quiet zones at all, or had, were they just not there at the beginning? What was the establishment of why it was only on the east side? Do you have any idea?
That, not having been present for the 2005 conversation, it's difficult for me to understand which areas were prioritized in line. What I will say is that this is an issue that we're talking about now, and I know that Council President Scott and you and others have brought it up over the years. And so we know that there's interest in extending it and making it available in more parts of the city, and that's what we'll have in mind when we vote.
Okay, I appreciate your understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Fordy?
Mr. Furley? In, Mayor, I've probably put you on the spot a little bit, but I'm, we missed, I dropped the ball on this in 2013, you and I talked about it, but I've seen all the documents in there, and yes, it seems, looking at Mishawaka, they repeatedly filed their reapplications for the process. I think we did miss it on everything on the west side, but it went back even prior to 2005, I believe. We need to look at that, talking to Eric Corvath as well on the subject matter. On the west side, it is a concern. Norfolk Southern, we have Norfolk Southern, we have Grand Trunk, and there are 16 trainings a day on Grand Trunk, there's 90 on Norfolk Southern. I think I would like to see, and I'm willing to talk to you guys, you know, another time about upping that budget allocation, because I don't believe, I know it's late in the game on the budget, but that 120 isn't really gonna cover on that. And the quality of life is a big issue. I would like to see something a little bit concerned effort in 2018 towards improvements on at least Norfolk Southern lines and some of those connections. So Regina, that's pretty much in your area, Oliver's area. I hear it at my house, I'm a light sleeper though. But, yeah, I would like a little further conversation on that, but I appreciate the update. It has been kind of confusing to citizens out there, and we are getting a lot of calls on that, so.
Will this be a three-year, or do we have, I mean, how long? May I ask, how, so if we are, when we are approved, what will that timeframe be for? It will be three years, and then we can expect to reapply, or is it 10, 5, what's?
I don't know the answer to that. We will find out.
Thank you.
All right. When will we do a follow-up meeting?
Later this week, Mayor? Follow-up on any questions left unanswered?
Yes, we're trying to get that yes by the end of the week. And obviously, the moment we have any actual news from the FRA, we will be communicating that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your report.
Sorry, just pulling up here. I feel like I probably did a mistake if I didn't say something about the other train-related issue that's is commanding a lot of attention tonight, which is just that I want to acknowledge that I know that the council's gonna take this up this evening in a resolution on that topic, and express the administration's commitment to working with the council and working with neighbors in the Ardmore area. We take their concerns seriously, whether they live, strictly speaking, within the city limits or not, and we want to make sure that anyone who's affected by any move that's made is heard and is treated fairly.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Gavin, you gonna come down? All right. Entertained motion for a rise and to committee of the whole? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance read, the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against. Your comments will be limited to five minutes per ordinance. With that, would the city clerk please read 4817? I'm sorry, could I entertain a motion to continue 4817?
So moved.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 5317?
5317, public hearing on inordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend municipal code, chapter 16, article 2, section 16-6 through 16-9 and 16-12, article 3 at section 1624, article 6 at section 1648M, articles 8 at section 1655 and 56, 1659B, to address procedures and special rates related to trash, refusal, and other solid waste and disposal.
Is there a motion to accept the substitute?
No.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a presenter, please? State your name and address. Oh, I'm sorry, very committee report.
The Public Works and Property Vacation Committee considered this bill earlier and gave it a favor. More recommendation to full council?
Thank you. Representative.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Lieutenant Kane, I'm deputy public works director for the city of South Bend. Office is on the 13th floor of this building. In front of you is substitute ordinance 5317, where we're recommending changes to the fee structure within the ordinance and some language changes. This does not impact the rates that are currently established for refuse collection and yard waste. Specifically, the changes that we're recommending are to provide relief and clarity to residents who take advantage of these services. The first change is in yard waste special pickup. Currently, if you are a participant in the city's yard waste program, you get the weekly service and you get one free yard waste pickup a month. In addition to that, if you seek additional yard waste pickup or special yard waste pickup, the current fee for that is $20 per cubic yard. We're proposing reducing that fee to $10 per cubic yard for special yard waste pickup. The second change is the change in the container replacement fee. Currently, there's a $50 container replacement fee. We have found that in many instances, residents report these stolen, and so we're proposing a change where if residents are able to provide a police report of a legitimate issue where a container has been stolen, that the fee would not be charged to that resident for the first time. If there are multiple containers reported stolen, then yes, there will be a fee applied, but this provides relief for the first time a homeowner reports a container stolen. We are adding a couple of fees. Again, these are to reduce the abuse of the current program. The first is a return trip fee. The return trip fee is when a resident forgets to put their trash container out during their pickup day and wishes to have the service, city service, come and pick it up that same day, and not wait for the next cycle or the next week when trash pickup will occur. That fee will be $10. We are able to, using our LLo system, accurately assess which cans have been picked up and which have not. So if someone does say, "We have a can," or "I have a can outside that was not picked up by city crews," we have a way through our software to check if that's accurate or not. So this is really just for those who wish for the city to come back and pick it up. The next change is an additional contamination fee, and this applies to when contaminants are added to yard waste and to refuse collection, and it will be applied as follows. The first time our drivers who have a camera on the truck and can see what is being tipped from the trash cans notice contaminants in the yard waste or refuse containers, they can issue a warning to the resident and provide guidelines on what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. Repeat violations of that will result in a contamination fee of $10. The other general change is just making sure that the ordinance reads more clearly. The rate structure is in one table as opposed to being dispersed throughout the ordinance within paragraphs, so all of this information is in one table. The other part of the changes are really language changes. We've cleaned the language, we've removed things like the recycle program languages that are currently in the program, in the ordinance, which are not necessary. We also clarified things like in the yard waste program, we ask for a fee of a certain amount for every cubic yard. What does a cubic yard mean? So we're defining the cubic yard as 10, 30-gallon paper bags, so that just helps a resident identify what that cubic yard means. So the changes here are really to clean up the language, to add a couple of fees to reduce the abuse of the program, reduce fees for certain portions, but again, no change to the rate structure. We have your taken questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council at this time?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I apologize, I wasn't there, in case you covered this in committee, but I noticed it says that no owner age 65 or older of multiple properties may claim more than one senior discount. That's as it is now? That's not a change?
That's not a change, but we do sometimes find the abuse of that program. So if a owner who's allowed to get a senior discount owns multiple properties will sometimes seek a senior discount for multiple properties, even if the residents of those properties are not seniors. So it's to prevent the abuse of that senior discount.
Is that to, I mean, you're looking at, you're assuming, or are you assuming that that's like, these are rental properties?
It could be rental, or it could be owner-recognizing, but every resident of the property has to apply for a senior discount.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions? Yes?
Quickly, your process for notifying folks about the contamination issues, is that a point of service, or is it a letter that's coming from the city? Is there something very quick that, what's envisioned?
For now, it will be a letter from the city. Our software will be able to tag contamination at the address, and then that will trigger a response from our solid waste team, and we draft a letter incentive to that address along with the guidelines.
And then, if you might, just briefly, because I, I think it's important for, you know, when we do changes such as this that are related to fees, if you could share some of the information you shared with regard to the return trips, the stolen barrels, that you shared, that you so kindly shared in committee?
On an average, we see about five or so return trips a day, and we see anywhere, and the same for, this is for yard waste or for refuse collection. We also see about anywhere from 65 to 100 containers that need to be replaced a month, and that's a large number that we're trying to bring down.
Thank you.
Now, you also shared this afternoon that in this, that the city worker happens to make the mistake. You are able to track that?
Yes.
And then, the homeowner or the person staying at the property will not be charged for a return trip? Is that, that continues to be the same?
Correct. So our software, like I said earlier, can track accurately, and if there's a mistake where our driver has accidentally not picked up, then yes, the resident will not be charged.
Do you see any kind of more situations, depending, depending on the weather? If it's raining more, snow and ice, you, you having more return trips going back, kind of a situation? Are you sensitive to the needs of what we're there to that, or how does that affect the social situation?
We're certainly sensitive to the needs of all residents. We have, our crews, you know, certainly in heavier snow and severe weather, our primary concern is to clear the roads first, and so our pickups are usually on delayed schedule. When that happens, we try to get the information out to the media, so residents are aware, same for holidays where we have delayed pickup. But we do have times, and every resident should be aware of when their pickup is to occur, within what timeframe, and so we ask that during that timeframe, they bring their containers out.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we will open up to the public. Anybody was from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council. What's your pleasure?
I move that substitute 5317 sent to the council, please, with a recommendation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Entertained a motion to rise and resolve in the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Yes.
Full council is now back in session. We'll wait on vice president. 4817, can I have a motion to continue to 9:25?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 5317, Ms. Fowler, would you give third reading to 5317?
5317, third reading on inordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the South Bend municipal code at chapter 16, article 2, section 16, section 16-6, 6 through 16-9 and 16-12, articles 3 at section 16-24, article 6 at section 16-48M, articles 8 at section 1655-56 and 16-59B, to address the procedures and special fees rate, special fees related to trash refusal and other solid waste collection and disposal.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolutions. Resolutions, this portion of the common council meeting is where common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee from which the bill has referred to an advisory, review, and recommendation is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exception, a report from the building department will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who's given a formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from the city community investment department will be given, followed by the petitioner giving formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposals, or resolutions, I'm sorry, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask preliminary questions only, with all other council comments being heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the common council. Please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they'll be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, and those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal from the presenter. Please present new information, not redundant information. I will just say, at this point, if there are members speaking and you're thinking they're saying exactly what you're saying, please just quietly raise your hand in, in support of what they're saying. Now I ask city clerk to read the first bill.
1748, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition for the area board of zoning appeals for the property located at 1206 Dunham Street.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, the zoning authorization committee met this afternoon, and this one, we have no recommendation due to the fact that the presenter was not here, but I believe the presenter is here now.
I believe the presenter is here? Yes.
Yes, he's here. Wonderful.
Excellent. Name and address, and...
Ioka Payke, zoning and business services administrator with the building department at 125 Lafayette, Suite 100. The special exception petition for a single, two-family dwelling in a SF2 single-family, two-family district comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area board of zoning appeals. The ABZA also approved a variance from the required four parking spaces to two for this location. The property had previously been used as a two-family dwelling, but did not meet the requirement for legal nonconforming use, having been abandoned for more than 12 months since 2004. No one spoke in remonstrance at the application at the ABZA meeting, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the presenter?
One question, please.
Ms. Broden.
How do you determine abandonment? What's the criteria?
When somebody comes to the office asking to do, get permitting or any information about the property, if we have reason to believe that it may not be conforming currently, so right now, a single car or duplex is considered a special exception in SF2, we ask that they can, they can apply for a certificate of legal nonconformance to verify that the property has not ceased use for the last, since the previous ordinance, which is about 2004, 2005, for 12 months or more, and that's a requirement of that section of the zoning ordinance. That's usually the main thing that, otherwise, they can prove it however they like to, we accept various forms of approval to get that certificate. This particular applicant didn't even bother with the application for certificate, just went straight to the special exception. Oh, also, there was a question earlier at committee whether or not the adjacent property was owned by the same owner, and that's not the case.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the presenter? Seeing none, will the petitioner please come up and make a brief statement? Please state your name and address, and just give us a brief statement of what you're doing with the property.
My name is Joel Alvarez. I live at 1245 Apple Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. I basically bought a place to fix it up, so I can help my brother and my sister out for someplace to stay. They live out of town, they work out of town, and it's hard for them to get back and forth to work. They all live in the same, they all work in South Bend, so right now, they live in the port, and it's hard for them to get back and forth. I'm trying to help out my family.
Excellent. I have one question. I was concerned about the changing the parking from four to two, but obviously, it's specific for their needs, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Boardy?
Do you happen to own the vacant lot next door?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, sir.
Okay.
Please leave.
Thank you. We'll open up to the public now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1748, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak against 1748, please come to the podium. Seeing, the public portion is closed, now turn it back to the council.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Good luck. Can I have a motion on 1749, please?
Motion to continue, kind of continuing?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1750, can I have a motion?
Motion to continue, 1750?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1751, Ms. Fowler.
1751, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition for the area board of zoning appeals for property located at 602 Colfax.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes. This also did not have a recommendation due to the fact that there was not a presenter? Is the presenter now?
I actually, no. Oh, she is here, sorry.
She is here. Good. So we proceed.
Ioka Payke, zoning and business services administrator with the building department at 125 Lafayette, Suite 100. The special exception petition for a single-family dwelling in a mixed-use district comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the area board of zoning appeals. The ABZA also approved a variance from the required one parking space to none at this location. The property had been previously used as a single-family dwelling, but did not meet the requirements for legal nonconformance, having been abandoned for more than 12 months in the last 13 years. No one spoke in remonstrance at the application at the ABZA meeting, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Question, is this part of the Chatham Park Historic District?
I have a question, but I can do a quick search unless somebody else knows the answer.
To my knowledge, no.
No, it is not. Okay.
I believe they've applied for several permits, and we should move about the CFA, it was.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the presenter? Now, would the petitioner please come up and give a brief, brief statement of what you're doing with the property?
My name is Deborah Mcatee Jerkowski. I represent and co-own a new beginning properties at 2387 North, 350 East, Rolling Creek, Indiana, 46371. We purchased this home in March of this past year, intended on flipping it, improving it, and was not aware that it wasn't originally a single-family home. So we went to go get the permit to demo it, then we went to go get the permit to fix it up. At the same time, I was trying to buy both permits at the same time, and they're like, "You cannot have the permit to fix it up because it's a mixed-use." So we then filed the paperwork and came here to be able to do that. It will, we will fix it up. When we purchased it, it's totally demolished on the inside. The boiler did not work, there was no heat. We got the demolition permit, we have gutted the entire thing down to the studs, waiting on... um, waiting on the permit. Be okay to be able to get permits now, but that's soon would be the roof and the windows, then start on the inside to be able to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the, for the petitioner?
Glad to be here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of seventeen fifty-one, please come to the podium. Seeing, anyone wishing to speak against seventeen fifty-one, please come to the podium. Public portion is now closed, turn back to council.
Motion for adoption.
Second, Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Boardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlic?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Would you please read seventeen fifty-six?
Seventeen fifty-six. A resolution by the South Bend Common Council addressing the City of South Bend Redevelopment Commission utilizing their River West Tiff District of South Bend for the twenty-five million dollars to help finance the double tracking of the south, the south shoreline with respect to people who live in the Ardmore neighborhood.
Can I entertain a motion to accept the sub?
Motion to accept the substitute.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there a committee report? Committee report?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Community Investment Committee met today, and we sent this forward with no recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a presenter or presenters?
Yes. Oliver Davis, sixth district councilman, address eighteen oh one Bass Street.
Thank you.
Karen White, at-large councilwoman, and address is nineteen twelve Melburn in the fifth district.
Thank you.
Regina Williams Preston, uh, councilperson representing District two, eight three eight North Elmer Street and District two.
Our other sponsor is Mr. John Fordy. He's right there waving his hand. I appreciate his support. Um, over the last few weeks, I've had the privilege of meeting with several people. Uh, Mr. Richard Collins has led a, a nice community organization that has kept us involved for us to be more proactive. Several people were kind of part of guard, and we believe that people need to be, um, understood and also for us to be upfront and to be educated about what is going on with this whole process. And so, from talking with Mr. Collins, I then further talked to, uh, Dr. Dave Varner, sorry, he cannot be here tonight, but I met with him, and so, to meeting with him to talk about ways we can reach out to the redevelopment commission, since this decision regarding the money is coming from the redevelopment commission, I talked with Dr. Dave Varner and said we will, um, form a resolution in support of giving them some guidance of recommendations of how we as a council would like to proceed. And so, I would like to also thank all of the four sponsors who led out in helping us, and all of you all tonight at our committee meeting. We have made some changes, but you all had some input, and I thank also, uh, Mr. Bob Palmer for his, uh, help regarding that standpoint. So, tonight, we're going to start off with, um, reading the resolution. We have it on the board of, and then we also have passed out everybody. Um, Ms. White will start, then Ms. Williams Preston, and then I will close.
A resolution by the South Bend Common Council addressing the City of South Bend Redevelopment Commission utilizing the River West Tiff District of South Bend for the twenty-five million dollars to help finance the relocation of the south shoreline with respect to the people who live in the Ardmore neighborhood. Whereas, Ardmore is an unincorporated community in Fortish Township, St. Joseph County, on the northwest side of South Bend, Indiana. We've also indicated a website to support this information. And whereas the rerouting of the south shoreline tracks will cause a great burden both financially and emotionally to the current residents of the Ardmore neighborhood. The proposed plan to move the tracks will cause a relocation of many of the long-term residents, which would bring both emotional and financial burdens, with various local reports expressing that estimated, estimated thirty-five to forty homes in the Ardmore neighborhood area would have to be acquired to accommodate a rerouting of the railroad's approach to the terminal at the South Bend International Airport. Again, a website has been given. And whereas the residents of the Ardmore neighborhood have a petition which has over three hundred signatures in hopes that the South Bend organizers might take a look at the actual people living in those homes, which could be affected by the rerouting of the south shoreline tracks. Again, a website has been given. At this time, I'd like to note that each of these paragraphs do have a reference for anyone interested in getting additional information. And whereas, various city, county, and business leaders say they have a prime opportunity to change the modest population growth in our area, which has grown for each of the past four years, but has trailed the state of Indiana's growth rate by double-tracking part of the south shoreline, which would eliminate the need for passenger line to wait for oncoming freight trains and realigning the south shore's approach to South Bend International Airport. And whereas, South Bend Mayor Pete Buttigieg shared that the City of South Bend would tap its River West Tiff District for the twenty-five million dollars to help finance the double-tracking part of the south shoreline, which would eliminate the need for the passenger line to wait for oncoming freight trains and realigning the south shore's approach to South Bend International Airport. The City of South Bend would try later to get the money reimbursed from federal sources. And whereas, South Bend Mayor Pete Buttigieg, when asked whether reducing the trip by ten minutes is worth twenty-five million dollars, expressed, "The answer is in the economic impact. We're talking about a game changer for economic growth. It's hard to think of something that would have a bigger potential bang for the buck than something like this," he said. "We recognize it's not a small commitment, especially for the county with some of the pressure it's under fiscally, but we also see the return on investment that could make it one of the best bets we've ever placed." And whereas, it is believed that there are ways to promote the south shoreline plans for faster transportation service between the cities of South Bend and Chicago, which is for the betterment of the residents who live in the city of South Bend as it relates to their transportation needs, and at the same time, promote saving the homes in the Ardmore neighborhood, which is in keeping with the South Bend Common Council's mission statement, to make certain that our city government is always responsive to the needs of our residents and that the betterment of South Bend is always our highest priority.
Whereas, being sensitive to the residents of the Ardmore neighborhood and to assure fair compensation and assistance as outlined in a federal uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition for federal and federal assistance programs, and there's the link, the following actions are respectfully being requested of the South Bend Common Council to the South Bend Redevelopment Commission for thoughtful consideration. Section one, that the twenty-five million dollars of tax fund from the River West Tiff funds is solely approved with the understanding of the following specifics. Number one, that the decision regarding the rerouting of the south shore tracks include a rerouting plan that preserves houses in the Ardmore neighborhood area to the maximum extent feasible, as informed by more than one firm that has expertise in the areas of architecture, engineering, and surveying industry, and with the public involvement with the Ardmore neighborhood neighbors who are affected by the rerouting plans. Number two, that if any house in the Ardmore neighborhood is required in the rerouting of the south shore tracks, those affected will be made financially liable as outlined in a federal uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition for federal and federal assistance programs. There's the link there. I encourage you all to go to that link because of some, um, very informative information there. And third, that the City of South Bend will share the citizens of the River West Tiff District that any of the Tiff funds which are used to reroute the south shore tracks will be reimbursed to the River West Tiff District to the maximum extent possible from state and or federal sources within a timeframe not to exceed five years. Section two, this resolution shall be enacted from the Council of the South Bend Common Council and signed by the mayor of South Bend. I'd also like to thank, um, Jeff Ray, he gave us comments today regarding, um, adding, uh, helping us to be very clear, um, with section two here. I would like to thank our councilwoman, Joe Broden, who helped us to really crystallize the part about the federal uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition for federal and federal assistance programs. I appreciate that link. And also, I'd like to also thank, um, Dr. James Mueller. It was nice working along with, he came to talk to us about the administration and their role in this and helped us to, um, bring this substance to build, which showed us, um, this afternoon and throughout this time, that there was a, the synergy in the room for us to really come together to make this a win-win for everyone, pro-transit, pro-neighborhood, and it can be done. And listening to the neighbors, I really believe that we can look at different options and make sure that we can do what's outlined here in this resolution.
I just want to make a technical note. The copy that is on the screen is the original. Uh, I know plenty of copies been handed out of the substitute, so there were some verbiage changed to what was on the screen to what Mr. Vice President Davis read.
Can, can, he's, she's going to change that?
No, this, this should be the, this should, this isn't the minute.
It wasn't. There were a couple things. But, but you're fine. What you read was the, the sub.
Does anybody have a copy?
I just want to make sure there was plenty of copies.
But, I didn't know what you said. You pulled up. He's just editing it, he didn't scroll down.
We passed out. We wanted to make sure everybody had it.
This should, this should be it. He pulled up what Palmer sent us. Did you look at it?
It's different.
It's different?
But it's better.
No problem. If you all can get it, look at it. Make sure you have it.
He pulled up what you sent us.
You made a record.
We print, it's printed properly. It's printed, it's printed properly.
It's printed properly.
It's printed properly.
We're good. I just want to make sure everybody has, uh, exactly what Vice President Davis said.
So, I'll be working on the same page? Same thing?
Scroll down some, Graham. Just scroll down to where he's at, so we can look at it.
To the final whereas.
To the final whereas clause.
Keep going.
Yeah, the link to FRA is not there. And you mentioned five years versus three years.
Yes.
Yes. So, the hard copy is correct. Sometimes that happens with the technical, which is fine.
That's fine.
How did you get your copy?
Again...
And more in your presentations.
Um, we've shared, uh, this all here. Everybody in the audience has a copy? This is, um, a summary of what I tried to write down from what I gathered from, um, the meetings, and this is all the news links that we have been able to see, and those who have covered the story, and we tried to put as many of the news links so you can go back to all the news links, pros and cons, everybody's comments could be included in the links, so we wanted to make sure that everybody was heard. And so, right now, we're ready to hear questions from the council.
Council, any questions? Mr. Furlic? Morning. Any other members out there? You can.
Okay, we'll come back later, man. Thank you. You ready?
With that, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in...
Yeah, we can go out our seats, I'll come back down.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of seventeen fifty-six, please come to the podium. State your name and address. Go ahead, you can line up. Line up, please. Name and address, please. And Gavin Furlic will time you, you each have five minutes, and he'll give you a one-minute excerpt. Mr. Furlic, when you're ready, and we'll start.
I'm ready to go.
All right.
Senator Brown, two 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 East, the Bar Street, the city of South Bend. I have a watchful approach, seriously, man. We watch all kinds of projects for the innocent to government. And, um, on this, uh, I'm referring to this for number one. I tell you, um, the only problem I have with this is trying to find the original copy of where this fact is going to go. I want to make sure people that's going to be affected by this, that it's going to be compensated fairly. Nobody like change. We didn't spend over a hundred million dollars, we could bring back in our city. We're coming twenty-five million dollars, and everybody's questioning this. But look at our city as a whole. We have invested a lot in the city of South Bend, and we are hoping with the change, it's going to be, the economic development, we bring in hotels, we doing a lot. Nobody really like change. I remember when that track came right down the center of the heart of New York City, went all the way down by Nisko, the Downey Hill, dropped off to South, made the Chicago paper, got delivered to Chicago paper, came back up the hill, and went out of town. And moving to the, um, South Shore Station, nobody liked that because of itself for other reasons. And then we moved the tracks to go into the airport. I hope that this time, we can get it right, because we're doing a lot of changes and a lot of hits in there. I want you engineer, I want to see the train, I want to see exactly where it comes, I want to know the people that's going to be hurt by this. It's going to be compensated for their land, regardless. I hope in the future, that the economic development out in that area will bring in the jobs and stuff and we're going to utilize that, that train. I really hope this happens. And I don't like to change on this one, but I know in the long run, something good got to come out of it, because we need to spend a lot of money. You know, you're looking at twenty-five million dollars. I'm looking at the big picture, I say. And I'm praying that people like the South is making the decision, going, make the right decision for the people, and I'm going to, I'm praying. That's why y'all elected. That's why you're in the city. You're going to make a harder decision. I'm there about to make a harder decision. And sometimes, the average person cannot look at the big picture. I mean, he's already changed, and he says, where are we going with this? What's happening? What's going on? Why that happening? That if somebody, somewhere, can see outside the box, outside the box, yeah, there's going to be some people upset, some people going to be hurt, but that happens in life. Right now, we do around how many houses? Now they're coming back, we developing these houses, and the only thing I ask is the group, the one I counsel people, sitting up there and supporting, the people that are being affected, when you come back into the innocent neighborhood, be compensated and don't be pushed out without having a chance to have money to restore their houses so they can live there. That's all I ask. We want it fair. So, I'm just trying, I got, Gavin.
Forty-five seconds, Sam.
Okay, thank you. Um, I used to be one like that, did no changes, and this is why I come to the father office, try to get much information, and there's a young man there put me up there so I can be informed in front of, up, what's going on. And I hope everybody here do the same. If it's not fair, talk to the people who are making the decision, and just try to get it there. Thank you, Gavin.
Thank you. Before you start, sir, if you gentlemen and ladies would like to line up along the wall on that back aisle, that, that's so everybody can see, uh, that would be great. So, thank you. And if you would, please sign in with your name and address for the record. That would help. State your name and address, and, and go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's David Gudali. I live at five five one oh nine Moss Road in South Bend, between Edison Road and Ardmore Trail. I've lived in Ardmore for about twenty-one years. I lived in South Bend for thirty-five years before that, my entire life. Um, I have some copies I'd like to give to you to go along with. I'm going here. So, I think our, the goals here are supposed to be the decrease in commute time between South Bend and Chicago by about ten minutes in this Ardmore project. The increased safety by reducing... Increase safety by reducing the number of grade crossings to as few as possible. There's like, what, close to 20 of them now. Those are dangerous, and this slows down the trip as well. Improve the lives of the people affected by this project. In the current situation, it's been reported that it takes about 12 to 16 minutes for the train to get from South Bend Airport to the Grandview Crossing, where it can increase its speed, accelerate. Off it goes at high speed to Chicago. And with so many grade crossings that are unsafe, that's what's slowing down the make is true. So the current proposal, location, relocation plan, most of you know is to move the station from the east end of the airport to the west end of the airport terminal. That's going to be very costly. They're going to relocate, they're going to have to relocate the bus terminal from the west end of the airport to somewhere else, because that's what's there now, is the bus terminal. Where's the bus terminal going to go? We don't know. That's costly. They're going to have to purchase and demolish, you know, what, 35-ish, give or take, houses, homes, churches, and other properties in Ardmore. That's going to be very costly. They're going to have to install brand-new trackage, and cantonary wires, the overhead wires, it's an electric train from somewhere south of Ardmore Trail to the west end of the airport terminal building. That's costly, and it's been undetermined. Nobody knows really where it's going to go, although we all suspect it's going to go up Lynn Street. They're going to have to install new signals at the grade crossings. Where are the grade crossings going to be? Are they going to have it at Ardmore Trail, at Grove Street, at Edison Road, at Lincoln Way? There's a couple small, I think Lawrence Street is in there. Are they going to close those streets? Nobody's talked about that yet. That would further dissect the whole neighborhood of Ardmore. Are they going to make those crossings quiet zones, like we're doing with the east side of South Bend? Everything you've talked about is in relation to South Bend. Ardmore's not in South Bend, it's in the county. Are we going to have a train put through with three or four grade crossings whistles all the time? I think there's six trains a day, maybe seven, so that's really 12 or 14, because it goes in and it goes out. I have an alternate proposal I'd like you to consider. Put the South Shore Station back where it was on Washington Street. And here's why. You won't have to acquire any properties, none, zero. Dickey owns the Amtrak station. South Shore owns the Amtrak station. The original tracks are still in place. They never took them out when they moved the train out. The original South Shore tracks are still in place all the way to the Grandview Crossing. They'd have to replace the wires, because they took those down. South Shore also owns an undeveloped two-acre parcel directly east of their current parking lot. It could be developed into a parking lot. We could fit 200 cars on two acres, no problem. There's only 100 spots at the airport right now. So that's more parking, no acquisition cost. They'd have to make a parking lot, so that would be the cost there. There would be one grade crossing total, at Grandview. That's it. One grade crossing. There's going to be eight, probably, more, if they put it at the west end of the airport, because they have to count every little sidewalk that has to cross, the county police has a post out there. All that has to be in. And that Grandview Crossing is a high-speed crossing, because the train used to go through there 60 miles an hour, 70 miles an hour, shooting down to where it's at the Washington Street Station, because it's a straightaway. It will only take a minute and a half to go from that station in Washington Street to the Grandview Crossing. It's going to take 14 and a half minutes off the time, the current time of 12 to 16. It's going to take eight and a half minutes off your 10-minute proposal.
I'm sure you have 30 seconds.
All right. So back in 2007, the airport acquired all the land. They tore down 200 houses. They acquired 400 properties. We were sure there's going to be jobs and prosperity, because businesses are clamoring for airport access. There's no businesses in 10 years, none. There's a net loss, because the businesses got yanked out. You can read the rest of my comments in there. I don't want to go for my, a lot of time. If you want to contact me or anything, I'm in the phone book. There's my name. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Next, name and address.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rich Collins. I live at 55478 Moss Road. I just have a statement to give you. You can have a copy of it later if you want to. The Liberty Committee of Ardmore and I are here to stop the $26 million tax and bond funding of the South Shore Realigning Plan using tax dollars. First, the $26 million is a huge amount of tax dollars, especially from TIF funds and bonds at 4% interest. How do you replace this money? How much taxation do you think the average citizen and small business in South Bend and St. Joe County can handle anymore? Why do you think a lot of our citizens, both educated and business, leave our area? Most voters will look at all of this very negatively. I do. Secondly, what does the average citizen or small business get for this $26 million? I've done a lot of research on this. And through my research, South Bend and St. Joe County get nothing. Zero for $26 million. This tax money could be used for better projects concerning our city and county that affect all or most of our citizens. What do we really get? The destruction of Ardmore plant, flat, and neighborhood, up to 60 homes. Not 40, not 35, but 60 homes with the last mention. Good will be demolished. This is a lot of families that will lose their homes and neighborhood. It is what we want to do. Is this what we want to do with our money? Most of these citizens do work in South Bend. Has anyone here read or seen the 20-year strategic business plan for the South Shore? This document was filed in 2016 to the U.S. Transportation Department. From the beginning to the end of this document, South Bend and St. Joe County get nothing except a loss of 60 families, the destruction of Ardmore, and an enormous tax money loss to our citizens. If you have read this plan, you know the South Shore will need many more millions of dollars. This is not the last time. We will be forced to give tax money again for Phase Two. I have to mention a direct quote from their own plan. "Everything goes south." Quote. "Nothing goes east," unquote. This is not a message of economic boom, coming from Chicago, only for Porter and Lake Counties. But they are telling us that the South Shore will be back for their part of the money next time. Let us use our tax dollars to attack our citizens' needs here in South Bend and St. Joe County. This is how you grow, and this is how you create jobs. I want another comment, just real quick here. The average distance is 25 to 40 miles an hour for a commuter train, in less than 30 minutes. On the back part of the thing here, I got some programs that would be interesting to South Bend to create. We have a terrible problem with the homeless. People have water bills, they're, you know, driving them to the poorhouse. There's a lot of things we can do, people. A lot of things we can do with that $26 million.
You have 25 seconds.
Sir, are you for this resolution?
I'm for this resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, because it gives us an alternative. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
But as it can, stands, this is the way it is. And this is the truth. Just look in the book.
You can leave that with the clerk, if you'd like. Thank you, sir. Just a note to everybody speaking. We're speaking on the resolution in front of us. So please tailor your comments around the resolution that's before us tonight.
Okay. Here, take this back. My name is Karen Capusac. I live at 23364 Lawrence in South Bend. This is in the Ardmore neighborhood. I have made some prepared comments, but it seems as if some people have stolen my thunder, so I will abbreviate them. First of all, I do want to note a little bit of irony here. And our mayor came earlier and addressed about the train noise problem on the east side of South Bend, and that they had to look for funds to put up barricades to conform with the transportation and railroad regulations to stop the horns. But of course, now we're going to be putting a train through Ardmore, and now we're going to begin to hear the horns. Seems like we're not making any progress here. Second part to that is, of course, we do not live in the city. We do not vote for the councils. It is, you know, out of our hands, and yet we are being affected by this. So that is kind of something which is very upsetting to my neighbors and to myself. I do support the resolution, and I do appreciate the work of Ms. Williams-Preston, Mr. Gordy, Mr. Davis, and Ms. White. I very much appreciate the hard work that you've gone into for doing this. And I support this, because I think that, yes, alternative solutions can be found. That we do not have to knock down 35 to 40 houses. That we can preserve the neighborhood. Just to quote from what I have written here, and I have given this to you all in an email. But basically, I think that one solution, besides going to Washington Street, where it used to be, would be to have the Sheridan Street Station. But I'm only saying this because the mayor is adamant about saving 10 minutes of time. Some people may think $25 million does not work, 10 minutes of time. In which case, if that's true, then we shouldn't even worry about this from the beginning, and just keep the train station on the east side of the airport where it is. It is a nice facility. The train goes through, next to the gravel pit. It goes next to the old Bendix Corporation. It really doesn't intersect with the neighborhood so much as it would going straight through our neighborhood. So I think personally, it's in a pretty good spot where it is. If you put a substation on Sheridan Street, the train can stop there for just a minute, let off people, go to the airport, stay there for half an hour, however long it takes for them to kind of clean it up and do whatever they do. The mosey, I call them the mosey people. The people like the mosey on the train, okay? They can get on at the airport, and then those people who have to be in a super hurry can jump on the train at Sheridan Street. Time is saved. We can brag about saving time. But this is only if it is considered necessary. This plan is cheaper. This plan does not interfere with the neighborhood, does not take homes away from people, and probably could meet the goals of all concerned parties. So I want to endorse this plan. I'm going to thank those of you who worked very hard on it. And I hope the Redevelopment Commission listens very carefully to your warning, so that we can save our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jenny Garner-Capson. I live at 55212 Sundown Road. My house and location is east of where they're going to be taking household properties. My point is the greater impact that people are not looking at. It's not just the 20, 30, 40, 50, 60 homes that have been talked about tonight. It's all the residents. We are going to be losing our east access, going east into South Bend. Road closures, rail stations, as it is with the impact of the changes done on Lincoln Way. It's taken away our roads on getting onto Lincoln Way. I now have to drive from my home all the way down to Mayflower Road in order to get onto Lincoln Way. Or I can backtrack from my house and drive down through Plaidig to get on to Lincoln Way. If I want, this is impacting people, especially a lot of the older residents. If we can't get out, that also means service personnel, emergency personnel cannot get in. That means time delayed on response for fire trucks, ambulances, police. They can't get to us, because we're going to be totally locked in. Now, people have been talking about Ardmore Trail and Sheridan. There is acreage, lots of acreage there, that belongs to, I believe, Westmore. Now, folks have said we can't touch that, because it's a toxic dump underneath. Well, if it's a toxic dump, then we need to clean it up, and it's going to cost us a whole lot more than $25 million. We need to look at that. I think it would be a solution, not as a stopping off point, but as a main terminal. Break away from the airport. Have our main terminal there at Ardmore Trail and Sheridan. Their tracks are there. There'll be no further need of tracks or overhead wires. It's done. It's a cost-saving measure. We can put a concrete top over that ground and pave over the top, huge parking areas. When double tracking eventually may get to us, it's not in the plan for us to get it. It's stopping at Michigan City. And what people aren't understanding is that $25 million isn't being used to buy properties and to make the building pretty and all that. No, that's just our part in the double tracking that's going, not even to our community. It's stopping in Michigan City. We still have about another $64 million that they're talking about that we're going to have to put in for the acquisition of land and to build a new terminal. Since we have to build a new terminal, I say we break away from the airport, put it at Ardmore Trail and Sheridan. Maybe go into partnership, get some funds from Four Winds Casino, because we could put a nice big area where they can park their little vans to pick up the people coming onto Chicago to come go gamble at our beautiful new casino. Now, I lost my train of thought for a minute. Lots of ideas.
You have one minute.
That really clears my mind. I do support the resolution. I do want you to please take note of the impact of housing, and the impact not just the few that are going to be losing their homes. But so please look at the impact of the whole community and saving 10 minutes for a fraction of our populace compared to the 10 minutes that we might actually use in saving a life. $25 million, it does any point. Thank you.
Next, name and address.
My name is Michael Harrigan. I live at 23289 Grove Street. I'm involved in this particular resolution, and I first like to thank all the council members. I do approve this resolution. I would like to make a note. When this resolution was drafted up, we had 300 signatures. Currently, we have over 500 signatures on the online petition, and we have over 600 signatures on paper version. So the number of people that are actually with us, supporting us in this cause, is a lot more than the little picture that was drafted inside this resolution. Some of the things that I want to bring to the attention is this isn't just about the homes and the properties. This is about the memories that were made in the Ardmore neighborhood. I welcome each and every one of you, board members, as well as all the people sitting here today. Come through the Ardmore neighborhood sometime. You will see people wave as you drive by. We are a friendly neighborhood. I don't want to see that neighborhood lost. That is the reason I support this resolution, because I don't believe those homes should be torn down. A lot of the residents in the Ardmore neighborhood, unfortunately, are elderly, which means to me, they are limited income. They cannot afford to fight to keep their homes. They don't want to move. They may not be physically able of moving. So what this may be to them is a death sentence early to their grave. I don't want to see that happen. I'd like to take a moment and read some of the comments that were made on our online petition. It kind of drives my point home. Both these comments were both made by people in South Bend. I want to keep their names anonymous. I go on to say, "My childhood home, with all my memories, is in this neighborhood. I lived in it my entire life since the day I was born. My mother still lives in it. We can't afford to lose it. My grandmother lives right behind her. Who wants to make an elderly woman move? She lived in her home since way before I was born. My mother grew up in that house. And right down the street is my great-grandmother, who has lived there since her children were young. It's heartbreaking to even think that there's a possibility of my family members losing everything we have." I want you to notice, this isn't just about the homes. Again, these are the memories that are being destroyed with the potential thought of losing the home. They are comfortable in their homes, and that's just my family. I could go on. Most of the people in our neighborhood have lived there my whole life, or a lot longer. Please help us fight this. Another person says, "Ardmore is a unique little off-the-beaten-path place that my family has called home for over forty years. Generations of family have grown up in the odd little area that stays safe despite growing chaos in the city of South Bend. It's one of those old-fashioned places that kids still ride bikes and Girl Scouts can still go door-to-door selling cookies without being afraid. Not only did my sister and I grow up there, but so did my daughter. My aging parents still live there. Neither of them in good health. To move them would be a terrible hardship on my family and their emotional well-being." Again, this is a small community. We call it Ardmore. It's more than just a bunch of houses. It is a series of homes, of neighbors who care about one another. We try to make our neighborhood better. The South Shore destroying it is not doing anyone justice. Regardless of the twenty-five million spent, if it were only a dollar being spent, I would still be against that. That's why I thank you again for proposing this and bringing this to the public's attention and hopefully we can make something different happen. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next name and address.
My name's Tim Weaver. I live at five-five-three-zero-three Butter Nut Road. I've lived there for a lot to us. That neighborhood means everything to us. If that don't mean nothing to you, then where are you sitting there for? If we don't have faith in our government, then where do we have you here for? I know we can't vote because we live in a county, but words travel. And I mean, it travels fast and we, I got a big mouth. I'm sure so you've heard it out there outside. And the guys I work with, I mean, save ten minutes, I get up an hour, an hour now just to get up, go through all this road construction, just to get on the other side of the ocean. And I got to be at work at four-thirty in the morning. And it, it kind of holds me up going through all this road construction and then you want to raise prices up on gases just to fix your roads. But why, why mess around with the neighborhoods? Leave them the way it is. Why ever ride a train when you don't even see anybody on it? If you bring something here to South Bend, then I can understand it. But there's nothing here. You got your, what, Chicago Cubs? You got University of Notre Dame. Not everybody's a Notre Dame fan. As you can tell. But I'm here to, to fight for all of our homes. It, it means a lot to me and my daughter. And she's wondering right now is, where are we going to live at if we lose our home? I don't know about you, but I'm in the RV industry and everybody knows how that RV goes. I, I was unemployed for three years because of it. And they drained my bank account and now I'm in a point, now I'm trying to get back out of the bottom. And if you do this to me, it's going to make it even worse for me and for Mike's family. That's all I have to say.
And sir, you're in favor of the resolution?
Yes.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
I'm in favor of it also. Dan Zang, five-five-one-four Melrose Avenue. I want to discuss something that no one has brought up at this and that is, what is this world consumed of at this time? What happened nine-one-one years ago? What happened? We all know what happened. And who's to say it ain't going to happen on this South Shore? You go on that South Shore with your backpacks, with your luggage. There's nobody checking you, nothing. You go on there freely. Something's going to happen on that South Shore someday and then what's going to happen? You're going to shut it down. All this money's going to be put into it and you're going to shut it down because all the crime that's been on it. We're talking Chicago. We're talking Chicago. Megan Caligula had a show on a couple of months ago and she talked to all the people in Chicago, one to ten, how dangerous is it in Chicago? They said you better make it a twelve or thirteen. That's how dangerous it is there. And we're bringing Chicago into South Bend. That's what we want to do? I mean, we're talking, when you're carrying that in one of those cars and somebody lets off with some guns, where are you going to go? You ain't going to go nowhere. You can't go no place. It's going to be dangerous. It's going to be shut down sooner or later because nobody's going to be able to figure out how to stop the crime on that train. And so you're just going to shut it down. You're going to destroy the neighborhood and that's, all that's going to come of this is you're going to shut down a whole neighborhood because of this South Shore that no one's taken even any consideration in backpacks. Anything you want to take onto that South Shore, you can. There's no checks. How can you, in this day and age, how can you let people just go freely on a situation such as that, especially coming from Chicago? We're looking at a big, big mistake here and you're going to put all this money into it and then all of a sudden, something bad's going to happen and you're going to shut it down until you can figure out what's going to, how we can solve it. And it's going to cost so much money, just like at the airports, that you're just going to say, forget it. And all these homes are going to be lost because of it. I'm Dan Zang.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
My name's Matthew Pizzi. I live on Ardmore Trail, two-three-two-seven-zero. Where to begin? I, I moved down to Ardmore in two thousand and nine. I've been there obviously, so eight years. And to see that they want to spend money, I mean, I first want to say that I'm in favor of a resolution to this. I'm in Ardmore at Glen. So I've heard rumors that it could go through Glen and, you know, and I know that a train is not just going to make a sharp ninety-degree turn. So if it's going to make a turn, that's going to be wide enough, just like down on Bendix and right by Honeywell, which is where I work, then you're not just going to be taking one street, you're probably going to be taking houses along wherever the offshoot of the train tracks coming from by the, where they are now. So I'm in favor of a resolution to save any homes in, on Ardmore and the neighborhood itself. You know, being thirty years old, I'm thirty-one now, I just had a son in March, I probably wouldn't stay in Ardmore forever, but there are people that live in Ardmore that aren't going to move. They've been there twenty years of all their life and this is where they're going to stay. So I'm in favor of something to save their homes, not just mine. Kind of like that, I have some rhetorical questions you can answer if you want to. If this were to come through Glen or near my homes to be acquired, how do I know I'm going to be compensated fairly like it says in that plan? Because I owe sixty-one thousand dollars in my house and all of a sudden, if there's a plan to have a train come through Ardmore, then all of a sudden my property value drops and now it's now worth sixty-one, seventy-five like I paid for. And if I get compensated fifty thousand, which I've heard it could be fifty thousand more than what it's worth, well, if it's worth nothing, now I'm only getting fifty thousand, I'm still in the hole. These are questions I'd like to have answered sometime soon. This is the first time I've ever been in this room, so I'm still new to this. I wasn't sure why I'd be coming up here in favor, but I realize it's in favor of a resolution, so. You know, I, I moved to South Bend to work at Honeywell, being originally from Lansing. So I moved into Ardmore, it was my first house, first time I ever bought a house. But we're supposed to be trying to attract more people to work in South Bend with this new train. But you're going to be pushing out some of the people like me who moved to South Bend to work here at the get-go, so. In some small ways, it's going to be counterproductive. And being, and I know this is a county, I don't pay city taxes, but if you plan on having the twenty-five million reimbursed through federal means, is that not going to come from taxes that we already pay in the federal government? So one way or another, we're going to be paying for it. So I don't have a lot to say. I just showed up here to say this off the top of my head and I've never had any of you before except for Oliver. And, you know, like I said, I have mixed feelings on it. If I feel like I'm going to be treated fairly, it'd be a different story, but somehow I don't feel it's probably going to be what is going to happen. I went through the lockout at Honeywell and I was locked out for ten months. You know, people's definition of fair changes, but I hope that you guys can come up with something than taking down houses in Ardmore because, you know, we got elevated trains in Chicago. Why not elevate the train? Why not, like someone else said earlier, take a different route before Ardmore, further west, and you won't have to take any houses? And you can still elevate it for any reason, so the traffic get through the highway, whatever. Or I know it won't, probably won't be going underground because I have well watered out and see how that would work, but I just hope that, I don't know, that you guys are the deciding factor whether or not this is happening. This is something that South Shore wants to happen. So I wish I could speak to them, but, you know, the little bit of money I'm paying taxes isn't going to sway their decisions. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Marty Wolfson, eight-zero-nine Park Avenue, South Bend. I support the, the resolution. I think it's important for the council to make its views known to the redevelopment commission, which has a deciding voice in this matter. And I won't repeat the very powerful testimony of, of the people who spoke before me about the loss of the homes and what it means to them and their community. I do want to point out, however, that there has not been, as I understand it, any economic study to document what have been claimed to be the economic benefits of reducing the commute time from South Bend to Chicago by nine minutes. And I think it's very questionable to spend twenty-five million dollars, displace many families, to save nine minutes when it's not clear what it's really going to do to benefit us, especially when there are so many unmet and important and pressing needs in South Bend that I'm sure we could all think of how to spend twenty-five million dollars on. So I would urge the council to pass this resolution. I would urge the council to, to suggest to the redevelopment commission that where it says preserves houses in the Ardmore neighborhood area to the maximum extent feasible. I would suggest that that be interpreted to mean no houses are destroyed and no people are displaced with the South Shore rerouting. And I think we need to be conscious of the idea that we want development, but we want development without displacement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Michael Kramer, two-four-two-nine-six Edison Road, South Bend, four-six-six-two-eight. My home lies about a quarter block away from where the bypass crosses over Edison Road. And I can hear the train as it crosses Lincoln Way West, going right to its airport, saying, as remarked, how loud that horn really is. And that's the main thing that really scares me, is if they move it closer, you know, I take naps in the afternoon, you know, I schedule varies. Sometimes I'm sleeping and I'm going to be woken up by the train. I don't mind it. I don't see it as a logical alternative to cut through a bunch of residential homes and change the whole honor park, the bus terminal, all that money spent just to make a few economic dollars worth for some jobs and, you know, some changes which keep pace with the rest of the state, which I think we're already ahead of the rest of the state with the tower being refurbished, with the Cubs making the ballpark really, you know, stand out. There's a lot of good things going on in our town. I think a lot of people love the South Shore. And I think that what they decided twelve or twenty years ago to take that spur and run it along the Kirk concrete area was really bad for those people, but it didn't really affect us much. So I feel bad for them, but I think they're used to it now. Double tracks with a train, I haven't seen the South Shore ever have to stop for a freight train. Their tracks are from here to me apart from each other. What else? I'm getting lost. But anyway, I think I said it all quickly, too fast. The horns, we love the South Shore. I think it's a good location, way it goes around. If it's too close to the freight trains, maybe we can put a little spur where it's a double track and we're getting these freight trains and they can make that work somehow. But cutting across Lincoln Way and, and those homes and getting closer to my house and cutting down property values, because who's going to want to buy the house when it's so noisy and that clink, clink train, which is very good, you know, it brings in a lot of folks. I don't know. It's a lot of money, but money grows on, you know, ambition. What else could I say? I think it's just a better ideal to stick with the tracks they have, make it work. It's nice, it's pleasant. Everybody seems to benefit a little bit. We can wait, we don't have to be in a great big hurry. I'm not going to forget how the things are important. I think that residents where they signed the petition is up to like fifteen hundred. I think it's way over three hundred. I'm making notes. Great line, very growth of profit. Oh, and is anybody going to really rake in some bucks and put in their pocket from this? I mean, the big dollars are flowing out, you know, and they, sometimes that happens a little bit. Just that, the airport is really forcing a lot of changes in our area that, the planes are so loud, they shake the ground for miles around. And they changed Lincoln Way and made it into, if you, the roundabout where Lincoln Way first hits, you know, at Mayflower Road. Those cars in the morning are backed up for half a mile just to get around that little spur that nobody thought about, you know, that runs into the red light. They sit and wait and when that's, people are waiting for that spur to go south, they can't go around and go in the middle because it really gets congested, not to mention the semi trucks.
I'm sure you have one minute.
I just hope you consider all the options, but everyone I've talked to, mostly my father, thinks it's ludicrous to change what works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seen, no. Any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis?
I see this Jesse Davis. Jesse Davis, P.O. Box ten-two-zero-five, South Bend, Indiana. Lot of good points made by these people. I've come up here many times and talked about our TIF dollars and the way our TIF money is spent. Apparently, according to the resolution, you guys are at least going to get some input into these TIF dollars being spent. Those TIF dollars used to be in our general fund years ago, a whole pie of our tax money. Now, we've taken forty percent of that pie and turned it into TIF districts, the airport, downtown, river districts. So that forty percent of the pie, you guys don't have control over no more. This redevelopment commission has an open checkbook and they freely spend it, will be known. So if we're going to spend twenty-five, twenty-six million, whatever the actual figure is, the county is supposedly going to vote on, I, I was told, another eighteen million on this? So we're in reality talking forty-two million dollars of our community money from St. Hill County. And then if we're going to try and get money back from the government, that's coming from us too. So we're going to pay for this twice. We already paid a lot of money to buy homes and tear them down and reroute Lincoln Way back in, I believe, two thousand and six, in hopes that the South Shore in two thousand and twelve was going to pony up some money to reroute the South Shore. It never happened because South Shore didn't come up with their money. Now they're coming back to us again. So we want to destroy some more homes. That's, that's never a good thing to destroy neighborhoods. This, this is at least an opportunity to relook at this. I'm glad that some council members worked on this. I hope the rest of the council that's here tonight will support this. Everybody said, you know, hey, we're bringing jobs here. We're bringing commuters here. No, we're not. This has already been figured out. Look at the age of most of the people here in the audience that are telling you they're going to lose their homes. I'll bet you most of these folks don't ride the South Shore and if you're lucky, they've rode it once or twice in their life. I rode it one time. Didn't care for it back in the eighties when I rode it to Chicago and back. This whole saving time is for one purpose, because we're building all these big, high-dollar apartments and condos in South Bend. We want people to live in them. They want young millennials to live there who are getting out of college. I don't have a problem with trying to draw the college-educated, younger generation in. We need younger people here in our city. But guess what? They can't get jobs here in South Bend and afford to pay for those condos. So where are they going? They're, they're going to take this ten-minute shorter ride on the South Shore to Chicago to work so that they can come back here and afford their apartments and condos. That's what this is all about, to fill these expensive living places that we're building. It's not benefiting the community as a whole. It's, it's a target that our mayor has made very clear, that he wants to attract young, educated millennials to our city. That's great, let's attract them. If you're going to attract them, let's attract business to our city so they can work here. They don't have to commute to Chicago to go to work and then pay the taxes while they're working in Chicago, just got to pay them the taxes here. Let's bring the jobs here too, if we want to attract the workers. Let's attract the business and the jobs. That would be a win-win for everybody. When those people go to Chicago and commute to go to work, a lot of them aren't going to stick around here to party. Guess what? You just shortened their ride to Chicago. They're going to head to Chicago to party. A lot of people do it already. They don't go to the South Shore and go to party. It's not about bringing business here to South Bend. So that little fairy tale can just be wiped away. It's about sending people and making their trip quicker so they can live in these expensive homes. You want to build the expensive homes, bring some businesses here that will support those expensive homes. That's the way to fix the problem. That's the way to fix the problem and our economy.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Will Smith, seven-twenty-eight Whitehall Drive, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-zero-five. I first wanted to thank the council for drawing attention to this matter, especially Oliver. I know that you have reached out to the residents who came to my neighborhood, and you are an exemplary public servant. I really do appreciate everything that you've done. I speak opposed to it, particularly the language that's inside of it. I would like to see the council send a message that we would like an economic impact analysis completed before the funds are committed. Everyone talks kind of about the bang for the buck and it's very economics, and yet we haven't studied anything. Do we really know what benefit that's gonna bring? Kind of the basic of transportation economics in that analysis is finding out if the benefits are double counted, and is it really then gonna provide what we're looking? Double track, kinda seems like a double count to me. So hopefully you take that in consideration, and I thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you. Public portion is now closed, but turn it back to council. Mr. Davis?
Rebuttal.
Rebuttal would only be per Mr. Smith's comments.
Yeah, see, Mr. Smith.
Can you have five minutes, Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Regarding Mr. Smith's comments, this is, I have Ms. Preston, Mr. DeVroy, Ms. White, one of which, I know sometimes we do our business there, but I do like his comment. Do you think that's something we need to put in a resolution? Do we need to put it in a letter along with this? Of course you thought on that, because we have had some discussion today that there's not been any economic study. Basically, if you'd care, I'm gonna put it there. I mean, what are your thoughts? I would like to share the rebuttal. If you want.
I think if there's a way to add that, I think.
You can microphone?
Oh. I think if there's a way to add that, I was kinda reading through, seems like there's a place that might fit right in there with maybe the first bullet of the recommendation. We've asked for.
Feasibility.
Additional, you know, in terms of the feasibility, I don't know if that would include any sort of economic impact.
Do you see a spot there? You're young committee, and there were, do you see a spot where we can add that in there?
Bullet point, fourth bullet point.
Could you share, Mr. Smith? I'm a little tired.
We've got three bullet points and four bullet points simply stating that we want an economic impact analysis completed before funds are committed.
I didn't hear what you said.
A little while.
Sorry, I'm over here. A fourth bullet point, simply stating that economic impact analysis to be committed, to be completed before any funds are committed, I think that would make this acceptable.
Are we clear what we're talking about? Um, what's the other?
I, I agree.
Yeah, I don't disagree that an economic impact study would be, I think it's in the plan, right, to conduct that beforehand. I just don't know, right, this, at this point, throwing something in there, I'd be more in favor of a letter personally, but just I don't know exactly where it's going or what it's saying, so that type of review.
Well, maybe, before we go out of the way, Ms. Preston, you have a spot where you could put it in there? That would ease everything, or is, um?
I mean, I think that actually after reading the first bullet, I think maybe it would actually require a separate bullet, like you suggested. I'd be willing to do something like that, but we have to do it very, you know, we'd have to do that on the floor, like right now.
Right now. Yep. Okay, Ms. White, and then we come back to Mr. DeVroy, if you don't mind. Let me just see what spots are out there and go right back to you, Clark. Ms. White and then Mr. DeVroy. Pardon me?
I have no difficulty with it. I don't like doing things on the floor, but I have no problems with it.
I personally would like to do it in the back myself and just have to name it maybe, but it's a good thought, and so I don't mind, I pause it, I'll have a second to deal with. Any thoughts on that, Mr. DeVroy?
Only that personally, I support the economic impact study, whether it's a letter or in this resolution. I don't think matters a whole lot. I would like to see if this resolution passes that we draft a short letter to our representatives on the redevelopment commission, asking them to support the majority will of council.
Okay. All right. We've heard from the, any for a reconstruction project?
Mr. DeVroy?
I'm okay. Mr. DeVroy, what's your thoughts?
I would be in support of this additional bullet point. I would actually probably put it up front as your first item, and I'm not su, I guess I don't wanna get bogged down.
I understand.
In the term of a study, you know, to limit it to a study. I mean, if there has been analysis, and I think we heard a little bit of that from the chamber representative today, I think there's a little bit that's already known by our Department of Community Investment. So what has happened thus far to chase that, you know, to inform this process, but then certainly I think there's an additional need, if you would, to make, to make the case, you know, for the economic benefit. I mean, I think we're a smart community, and that type of input into this process, I think would be, would be welcome. Due diligence is what I'm getting at.
Vice President Davis?
Thank you.
I would like comment from Dr. Mueller on this, plus also, can you just kinda quickly summarize, where is NICD, the county, the state, the federal government, where are we in the tire process right now? Just to kinda clarify and set where the stake is in the ground right now. And then, Vice President Davis, I think if we're gonna make a motion on the floor, maybe you and Mr. Smith get together on the language?
He obviously had something really nicely.
Okay, all right. If you wanna go that route?
Could he answer your NICD issue first?
Please.
And then you come back with what you wish to ask. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, council. James Mueller, Executive Director of Community Investment, working on the floor of this building. As part of the resolution, you cited the Federal P.O.F.R. Relocation Act, and part of that will require them to go through the National Environmental Protection Act, called DIPA. By doing this, you evaluate a number of alternatives, look at all the impacts, throw out the ones with the biggest impacts, and hone in on the alternative that has the least impacts. One alternative that's required on all, all of the, everything in the DIPA process is a no-action alternative, so not doing it. And by doing so, that will be one alternative that's evaluated, you know, the impacts relative to the other. So there will, most of these, it's called environmental assessment, if it's a shorter process, called an environmental impact statement in EIS, if it's a longer statement, if the impacts are greater. And it's kind of a misnomer to call it environmental, because they look at everything from no noise, human impacts, economic impacts. So there will, this will be done as part of the requirements under the federal law. So getting to ultimate Davis's question on language, if it's restricted to no funds on construction are spent, there may be funds for design studies or other things, but if you limit it to no funds spent on construction of mine before an impact, so that would be sufficient, because it's gonna get done anyway.
Do you understand what he's talking about? Are we clear with that?
Clear.
Because there's some things we have to have funding in order to get some understanding.
Right.
So if we not have any funding to get any understanding, it puts us in the dark. So we have to have some funding released so we can get a better understanding, is what I'm trying to think of what we are trying to do. Okay?
Okay.
I'd like to call upon our chairman, Mr. Bob Palmer.
Yes.
Do you have an understanding of what?
I do.
Could you summarize that in a little language and share that with the audience and the council?
I would suggest a separate bullet point to the effect of that no TIF funds for construction will be committed until such time that an economic impact analysis is performed and made available to the public.
Are we all clear on that? That's what you said?
Sure.
Okay. You agree? You agree?
You agree.
Vice President Davis, is that?
If the Bears could've done this yesterday, we could've won the game. But anyway, looking forward, off the surface.
Is that your amendment?
I'll move to make the amendment.
Sir.
You're in charge.
For allowing me to be in charge, Mr. Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
All right, well, then, I thanked the administration, thanked the public, thanked all of your neighbors coming, and.
We will have studied with your rebuttal.
Mr., one last thing I think we need to do, Mr. DeVroy's made a statement, and I'd like to just highlight that, because we already have Gavin here, that we just have a cover letter, that we will send this, we're working along with our clerk to make sure that the redevelopment committee has this. You already have your agenda for Monday, I mean, for Thursday, or what's the next thing?
I'll come back tomorrow.
There's unfinished business.
So this will not be at the committee service until, right?
I haven't seen it. Jenny come back tomorrow.
James, what do you have until the redevelopment? If you can get to this Thursday, do you have it? So probably the, the date of the twenty-eighth? Five?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're looking at September the twenty-fifth, maybe on Thursdays at that time, I think it's nine o'clock?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty. So let's, I'll shoot for the twenty, nine thirty, so this will be presented to the redevelopment with the letter that Mr. DeVroy had talked about, we have as a cover letter. Okay, or with Mr. DeVroy?
Yes, may I ask just procedurally, is not, isn't there not a way to change that agenda by a certain number of vote? I don't know what the operating.
So you say it should be presented this week?
I think you gotta give them time to get everything together.
I totally don't know. I would have to defer to the president or to Mr. Mueller? Mr. Mueller?
Yeah. We can try to make a work.
You can try to make, well, this probably is, Mr. Mueller, so we can.
Actually, make sure there is a procedure that, that we can avail ourselves of that.
Okay, could you?
Sure, we, we.
It's just a rest.
We have an internal draft agenda for Thursday, but we have not made public notice for that yet, so there is an opportunity to add a late addition if the council desires to have a discuss.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. DeVroy. I'll welcome that. Mark that, yes. And change it, send out, everybody copy that. I'm done, Mr. DeVroy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll turn it back to council portion. Is there any comments at this time from council members regarding this bill? Thank you all.
I will say one thing, just for fun, I just wanna appreciate the spirit of cooperation that just happened here tonight. I think it's phenomenal. Thank you all, public, city administration, council.
I will make one comment. I believe in the freedom of speech and also your right to assemble and come and speak on this. I believe, I encourage you to do the same at the county level and the NICD level. I think you guys are well organized. I think however this turns out as far as the impact, we don't know, and that's the scary part. And more information is good, being out early in front of this is excellent, and I want to thank council members for this discussion. So with that.
Make a motion for adoption of the amended version.
Second.
No, we need to, oh, we already accepted the amended version. All right, Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember DeVroy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlitt?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broton?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, first reading to fifty-four-seventeen here?
Fifty-four-seventeen, first reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at three-three-three North Kenmore Street, Councilmanic District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
A note before we have a motion, this was a scribbler's error. Can I entertain a motion to change this bill number to fifty-eight-seventeen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now can I have a motion for the bill?
Move it be sent to Zoning and Adixation Committee and set for second reading in public hearing on nine-twenty-five.
Second.
With APC and public hearing for ten-seventeen?
Wait, something's wrong with me. Area Plan Commission, for ten-seventeen.
Ten-twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yes.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Fifty-five-seventeen, please.
Fifty-five-seventeen, first reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at two-twelve East South Street, Councilmanic District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I'd like to make the motion that this be sent to the Area Plan Commission for ten-seventeen, and then followed up by Zoning and Adixation Committee for ten-twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Fifty-six-seventeen, please.
Fifty-six-seventeen, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, establishing a part-time police officer program for the city of South Bend and, and the police department.
I make a motion that bill fifty-six dash seventeen be sent to a public safety committee meeting, set for committee meeting, second reading on nine-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Fifty-seven-seventeen, please.
Fifty-seven-seventeen, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving an interlocal agreement between the city of South Bend through the South Bend Human Rights Commission and the county, and the county of St. Joseph to enforce the county's human rights ordinance.
I make a motion that bill fifty-seven dash seventeen be sent to Community Relations, set for nine-twenty-five, for a second reading and committee meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business, please.
Motion to continue, continue this until October ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Any new business? I'd like to thank Vice President Davis and the clerk's office and Bob Palmer for filling in last week while I was on vacation and forgetting everything that went on here. Thank you for putting together the agenda. Appreciate that. Any other new business?
Mr. President?
No, sir.
We had, we had discussed, and there was interest from the council for a summary report on the homelessness task force, and I wondered if we could put that on agenda, or would we prefer to do a separate meeting on that? And I think a second issue was the issue of lead in our community and.
A discussion, though, too?
A discussion, yeah. That's what I had heard at past meetings, so I wanted just to follow up on that in terms of our agenda, or whether perhaps also the task.
So both would be in health and public safety?
Right.
So Mr. DeVroy, if you wanna try to work out with the schedule between budget?
I was supposed to have done a resolution with lead, but I've kind of been.
So we wanna set it separate as a committee meeting?
We could probably do the two.
Okay, we have one meeting, we have both.
In between?
It's how much in time do you look at? Okay. Only thing I do know is that Monday, September eighteen, it's gonna be another budget meeting just to hear only from the public, based on all the information of hearings thus far.
I'm almost down to October now.
On the update from EBA, go back to your email, because there was some correspondence from Crystal about whether the other parts were ready or not, so go back to your email.
I wasn't tracking that one.
Joe, we'll coordinate that. All right. Anything else? New business? Privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to speak in the public can come to the, hold on a minute, let's do the instructions, please. Anyone wishing to come and speak to the common council can do so. You have three minutes, you need to state your name and address. It cannot be about anything on the agenda tonight. It cannot be about anything on the agenda tonight. Good night. If you want to speak about anything, come to the podium. State your name and address. Just nothing on the agenda that was on tonight. Sam Brown is a, a veteran. He can show you how to do it. Name your, name and address, sir.
Samuel Brown, 222 East Village in the city of South Bend. 1401 Elway, New York City, Minnesota. Scott, I'm the director of the project for Mr. Randy Workerson. And the developer doing his best to, uh, get funds to finish their project. And if we could have gone on record, I wanna be on record saying this. The developer, I met him, and talked to him, and I opened up the day with Workerson, sent him an email. And tried my, do anything I could to try to help speed this process along. But the citizens of South Bend cannot wait for it. So we need a timeframe. And we are patient people, but it's been a long time. So let's get back together with the developer, Mr. Scott, and Mr. Workerson. And be fair with the gentleman also. I mean, are we talking about another half a year, six months? Or we talking about another two years? If we don't wanna invoke the penalty on the gentleman, he loses everything, because he's got a lot tied up in it. But we refer it to the public and the citizens of South Bend, we gotta have a timeframe. I mean, that's fair enough. And then we're gonna have to start making some actions to get that stuff cleaned up because we got too nice of this city to let that go on. So, we got a little timeframe. And it is only business. And I understand you're the best kid, you gotta raise funds and do so forth. But we cannot continue without a timeframe. Let's, let's get that on the, on the both. If we do, we have to invoke the penalty, he loses everything, and then we the taxpayers. After coming, you guys get fined, clean that up. So we're gonna isolate you. Are we on the same page?
Same page.
Thank you.
Next, name and address, please.
Sue Castle, 402 Kennedy. First, I'm gonna say thank you for getting my road paved. Yay. I really appreciate you keeping me on the streets, so thank you so much. I also wanna say I've really enjoyed getting to know all of you in some way, and I really appreciate all your talents and strengths. Ms. Preston is a teacher, is being a good student and learning the ropes, and I'm learning some of the things along with her. I certainly appreciate Ms. Broden's attention to detail and the homework, and she really researches an issue, and, and I think that's great for the people. Tim, I love what you do with technology. Thank you for including me on the website demo. I think that'll be a great addition to the city, and I'm so glad to see that. Mr. Davis, you're, you know, you're like the heart of the people. You really go back for the average citizen. And I think that's, you know, just really heartfelt, and I appreciate that. Mr. DeVorty is, I'm always impressed with his knowledge of history and depth of what has gone on in the city. I just, I mean, whatever the issue, he can go back and say, well, it was this, this, and this. And, and I think that's really valuable to know how we got to this point. And I, I enjoy hearing that, that background. So, thank you for that. Uh, Gavin, you're youthful and just so bright and vibrant, and you bring so much energy. And congratulations, especially, on your, on your, um, on your wedding. And Ms. White, you are just very even. You're great with meetings. You're just like nothing faces or flaps you. You're just, you're just so, such a calming presence. And I, I appreciate that and your, your history of knowledge on the council and, and willing to work with people outside the council. And, and Graham does a great job keeping it all together there.
I was hoping you wouldn't say.
And Ms. Fowler and all of, all of you. I just wanted to take, take this time to express appreciation, because I know sometimes I get a little passionate, as you know, representing the citizens. So, thank you for all you do, and I appreciate how.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, name and address. Come on up. Three minutes and Gavin Ferlick's time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kelly Bedouin. My address is 19553 Garden Road, South Bend. Um, I'm here today to speak about the electricity rate hike from I N M. I N M is currently petitioning for a $263 million increase in electricity revenue. They want to raise our fixed charge from $7.30 a month to $18 per month. Uh, that's before you even start using electricity. Along with increasing the rates for kilowatt hours, rate hike will burden the budget of this city and its most vulnerable residents well into the future. Per I N M's estimates, the average household, that's average, user will pay about $300 more a year. I N M made the decision to continue operating their super cooler rock port coal plant, even though their own analysis proved that it is more cost effective to transition to cheap and natural gas or renewable power sources, or combination of both was their analysis. They wanna pour millions of hour dollars into this dirty, obsolete, expensive coal combustion technology. The citizens of South Bend are opposing this. We will not pay unreasonable rates for dirty energy. It's time for I N M to make smarter choices. I N M should pay for its own business decisions. So I came here tonight on behalf of Indivisible Indiana Districts Two to ask the council to join our opposition. Please attend the I U R C public hearing on October 2nd at 6:00 PM in the Century Center in the Recital Hall, which is a small venue. We hope to overflow it quite a bit, I hope. Please get the word out to all of your networks and constituents and show up and speak on behalf of our citizens and say no to I N M's rate hike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some materials. Do you guys want?
Add it over there, please.
Do you have, I don't know where it's placed over here, no?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, or speak in privilege of the floor? Go ahead. Name and address, sir.
Michael Kramer, 24296 Edison Road, South Bend, 46628. And I too was pleasantly surprised and pleased at how it didn't seem like it was just one-sided, you know, already decided decisions made. And then, and so I was happy about that. And I, of course stutter and think intermittently, but I knew what time this meeting was tonight. I planned around it because I made the schedule to work for me, whatever it was.
Thank you. Entertain motion, adjourned?
Submove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
I'll go back and make this last change and send it on to everybody.
Okay, okay. But look at, um, you, you have the, okay, you have the, you have the correct one, though.
Right.
I was just saying, look at that last one, because that, that last, if you make it from the last one you sent and the last one that Oliver picked out, that's not that good. So you make it.
I'll make sure.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. If we don't, if, if, if we don't get that until tomorrow, that's okay? Because I don't think we're gonna get everything processed on that tonight. I mean, if you get.
I'm going, I'm just gonna go back and, I'm gonna be in Chicago tomorrow.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'd rather get it done.